When we left here. Yeah, you weren't. Ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I call this meeting of the Frazier Planning Commission for March 2, 2022, to order at 7:00 o'clock even. So that's good. It's a first, I think, that we started right at 7:00. But welcome back, everybody. It's been a long time since we've been together like this instead of Zoom. So if you'll all join me in standing and starting our meeting with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we'll begin with roll call. And so Cindy, if you will do that, I get used to that because Paul's always done it.
I just want to say if I mispronounce your name, please feel free to correct me.
And welcome. Everybody, welcome to the -- this is our city clerks, Ntia Grinya.
Bar, here. Zarniki.
President.
Marina.
Here. McComb, Frazier.
Perry.
Here.
Is it Keel or Kyle?
Kyle.
Kyle.
Here.
And Worna.
Here. All right, thank you. Now, we need approval for the agenda. Is there any discussion or comments on that?
Nope.
If not, oh, we do.
No, I was just going to make a motion, Mr. Chair, whenever you're ready.
Okay. If not, then we will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved out, he will second it.
Commissioners Arneke, who's?
Well, I'll move to approve.
Your motion to approve and set and support by Kyle. Okay. So let's do another roll call vote. We'll get Cindy used to this.
Bar, yes.
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So the agenda is approved, and we'll go to item number four, which is my opening remarks. Tonight's meeting will follow the agenda that was posted online and has been printed for you here. Before we begin, it's important to let everyone know that the Planning Commission is created by state law. Commission is comprised of seven members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The role of the Planning Commission is to plan and promote the efficient coordinated development of the city for the health, safety, and general welfare of its residents. We're not here to negotiate with applicants or allow everything an applicant is requesting. However, the Planning Commission does have the power to approve certain requests and recommend others, depending on the nature of the request and whether all the standards in the zoning ordinance have been met. Planning Commission may also impose conditions on a proposed project in order to ensure that those standards are met. Other individuals here with us this evening are representatives from the legal firm of O'Reilly Ransilia, O.P.C., and representatives from McKenna &amp; Associates, the city's planners. Procedure followed by the Planning Commission for public hearings first involves a city planner providing an overview of each case. After the overview is completed, the petitioner will be asked to provide additional information and answer any questions the commission members may have. After the commission's questions, the public will be invited to speak. Each person will have one opportunity to speak, must only speak directly to that specific case, and must only address the commission, not the petitioner or anyone else in attendance. After the public has had an opportunity to speak, commission members may again ask questions of the petitioner, and then the commission will consider a motion. Now that we've gone over these guidelines, I'll forward, move forward with agenda item number five, approval of the minutes of the meeting of December 1, 2021. That was our last meeting. Any discussions or comments on that? Saying none, I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from meeting December 1, 2021, as printed.
Support?
Second.
I'll support.
Okay. So we got a motion by Commissioner Kyle, support by Commissioner Perry. Do another roll call.
Bar, Ms. Zarniki?
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number six, new business. We have no public hearings, no site plans and other reviews. So the next item we have is Planning Commissioner vacancies and candidate interviews. So that's pretty quick. We don't have to make our candidates sit here through the whole meeting if they don't want to. Usually, they sat maybe for three hours before they were interviewed. So I don't, I want to, let's see how the procedure we're going to use for this because we've had ways in the past that we've done it, and we haven't met in person here for a while. So, Mr. Urbil, if you'll at least give us a procedure guideline to do here.
Sure. So there, three of you have, your terms expired on the 20, at the end of 2021, and then there's a vacancy left by former Commissioner Cook. The city council has asked for recommendation from Planning Commission for all four of those seats. So I think a possible avenue that you might take is to first, for the commissioner, commission to recommend reappointment of the incumbents, since you've all expressed a desire to continue to serve, and then have a conversation with the applicants for the remaining seat.
Is your microphone on?
Press that button, sorry.
Here we go.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's fine.
So if that's good, if everybody, I guess we all heard, right?
No, I didn't hear.
Oh, you didn't hear? Okay, can you do that again?
So Commissioners Perry, Bar, and Chair Warrenick's terms expired at the end of 2021, and there is a vacancy that was left by former Commissioner Cook. The city council has asked for Planning Commission recommendations for all four of those seats. So I think a potential procedure here would be to first consider, or for you to recommend that all three of the current commissioners who have asked to continue to serve, that the commission recommends those people to counsel, and then have conversations with the two applicants for the remaining seat.
So we don't have to do that individually? We can do it in a group of three, or should we do them individually?
Right. Yeah, so three motions.
Okay.
And the person in question would abstain from each one.
Okay.
And from their respective.
Commissioner Farina.
I'd like to recommend Mr. Warrenick be reappointed to the commission. I think he's done a great job as chairman, and I think he looks out into the future, which is something I'm looking for in any candidate that sits on this panel. You have to think strategically, where will we be in five and 10 years? I think that's important, so. That is my motion.
I will second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Farina, support by Commissioner Kyle. So we do a roll call.
Any discussion?
Oh, yeah, any discussion on that? Any other?
You accept.
I accept. All right.
Bar, yes. Zarniki?
Yes.
Marina?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes. I don't have to vote, at least.
One percent.
Okay. All right, next up.
I'd like to.
You still want to?
Yeah. I'd like to recommend Ms. Bar be reappointed to the Planning Commission. She has served outstandingly since she's been on and brings a legal perspective to the commission that is well-needed.
I support.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Farina, support by Commissioners Arneke for Ms. Bar. Roll call.
Does she accept that?
Oh, yeah, let's go back. Any other discussion first? Forget that, nothing? Do you accept? Okay. Acceptance is there, so let's do the roll call.
Zarniki?
Yes.
Marina?
Yep.
Kyle?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Worna?
Yes. Okay, we got two down, one to go. You got your light on still, so it's up to you.
Well, you turned it off.
Do I? Oh, that's how that works. Okay.
Does anybody else want to?
Anybody else want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, recommending Ken Perry for his next term on City of Frazier Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kyle, support by Commissioner Farina. Mr. Perry, any discussion? Do we have acceptance?
Sure.
Okay. Roll call.
Bar?
Yes.
Zarniki?
Yes.
Marina?
Yep.
Kyle?
Yes.
Worna?
Yes. Okay, so we got the vacancies, and that will go to council with a recommendation from this board. Okay, so we basically still have to wait, and hopefully their next meeting will be next Thursday, so that'll be presented there. Good. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Can I just confirm that that's a two-year appointment? Is that correct?
Yeah, I thought it was three.
I know it's a two-year, but something says three-year.
I thought it was three.
I thought it was three-year, too.
Three?
The terms are rotating three years, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or alternating three years.
Oh, some, I know it might be because, like, I took over for, and I was in the middle of a term.
Okay, yes.
So that's why mine was like only a year and a half or something, so not even that, I don't think, but. Okay. So we got the vacancies, we got recommendation to city council, so now we have candidates. And how about the procedure for that? What are we going to do for that, Mr. Urbil?
So you have in front of you the standard set of Planning Commission interview applicant questions and a ballot, and I think we might ask one of the candidates to
Leave the room.
About the room for, while the other one is interviewed, and then we'll switch.
Okay.
And then there's a written ballot that each commissioner can pass over to the administration.
Okay, so basically same as we used to, used to be before. That's the way we used to have it. So if we can, let's start with, first one on the list is Michael Lessig. And if Ms. Meyer can leave the room?
No, wait, it's her option, Ms. Meyer?
No.
Yes, her option, if she wants to leave or not, this is a public meeting.
Oh, I think we've always, because of questions repetitive, then, and
Right, I understand, but it's, we ask that you do that, but it's your option if you want to stay. Okay, all right.
If you can close the door behind you, too. We'll come out and get you.
I don't get a new fancy chair.
Oh.
Whoa.
Hello, Michael Lessig.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could just introduce yourself real quick.
Yes, Michael Lessig, 15201 Fairview, Frazier, Michigan.
Okay.
In Frazier, Michigan, at the moment, so.
And the procedure, I know, will be that these, the candidates will be interviewed here. I don't know if it came through that good on there, but then they'll be voting on it, and one will be sent to council for a recommendation, and so.
I understand the process.
Okay, so we got a few questions. First one, how long have you lived in Frazier?
Twenty-three years, three days ago, as of three days ago.
Wow, you got that one down on there, three days ago. Are you currently, or have you ever served on any other board in Frazier, and how'd you hear about the open position on the Planning Commission?
I was a recreation commissioner for eight years, from 2007 through 2015, and I have served on the city council from November 2015 through November 2021.
So six years?
Yes, and I've heard about it because I knew there was an opening due to the passing of Mr. Cook.
Okay. Have you ever appeared before the Planning Commission, either in Frazier or in another city?
Not with any business before the commission, but I did once speak in public at a Planning Commission meeting as a citizen.
Okay, so we wouldn't be, there wouldn't have been an outcome for that, so.
No.
Okay, were you sat, well, there was no decision, so you couldn't have been satisfied with that.
I had no business before the commission, no.
Okay. I know we already asked, how'd you hear about the open position, the PCs, but why do you want to serve on it?
Well, I, as I said before, I've served on the Recreation Commission and the city council, and as, after I left the city council in November, I decided or wanted to continue to serve in some capacity and volunteer to improve my community.
Okay, can't get enough of this building, right?
Can't get enough of those chairs.
Are you involved with anything that may pose a conflict of interest in serving on this board? For example, are you currently employed with the city of Frazier? Are you, or have you been involved in litigation against the city of Frazier? Or do you currently own a business in the city of Frazier?
Okay, that was a compound question.
Okay, one at a time?
One at a time.
Are you currently employed?
By the city of Frazier, no.
Okay. Are you, or have you been involved in litigation against this?
Only through the city council as a defendant in lawsuits against the city.
Yeah, nothing?
Nothing personal, and I, and what was the third question?
Okay, that was on, do you currently own a business in the city?
I do not, and I don't own any other property except my home in the city of Frazier.
Can you read blueprints, both commercial and residential, and are you able to visit the property of the PC applicants prior to the PC meeting?
I have some rudimentary knowledge of blueprint reading. I've read some through the Planning Commission actions that have come before the council. I'm not an expert, and I can't visit locations if necessary.
Okay. Can you attend all meetings, which are normally held the first Wednesday of each month?
Yes.
Okay. What do you hope to see in the city of Frazier 20 years from now?
Well, with the advent of the new master plan, which is long overdue, I see some opportunities for redevelopment, and would like to see us become, as we redevelop areas that could use an up, facelift. I'd like to see some consistency and move the city economically in a direction that is advantageous to the whole city, the residents, businesses, et cetera.
Okay. So briefly, why are you qualified to serve on this board, and why do you think we should choose you over other applicants?
Well, I really wouldn't say, I really couldn't give an answer why I should be chosen over other applicants, but I did attend the Citizen Planner course through Michigan State University Extension. I did graduate from that course in 2019. I have made decisions that have come before the Planning Commission first and have experience at the city council. What other, and what was the question?
Basically, just why do you feel you're qualified to service on the board?
Some of the other areas I've worked in are capital improvement planning in other communities for water and sewer infrastructure, become familiar with municipal budgets, capital improvement budgets, and realize that there's a lot that goes into the planning for future redevelopment. So let's say that we are redeveloping in the master plan that was mentioned, Warfield Greens, if that was to ever be sold. That requires a substantial infrastructure and investment in the community, and those are the kind of things that I think need to have a keen eye from the city end of things.
Okay, good. Any, any other board members have maybe something? Sure.
I've just got to ask you, Mr. Lessig, if, what would you like to share with us? Something more on a personal side?
Well, I've been resident for 23 years, and I love this community, and I think that we have, in my experience over the last, I started my journey in municipal business here through a possible redevelopment of the property behind my house in 2006. That got me very interested in how these kind of decisions are made, and I've taken an interest in making sure that we as citizens and we as leaders and decision-makers look at all aspects of it to ensure that we are having a balance in the community that addresses all sides in a transparent and fair manner. That's, that's really important to me.
As a councilperson, you are very well-known, and I'm sure you've met several people through all of your actions, through city council, developers and so forth. Do you believe that you can remain impartial on, you know, action items?
I believe I can remain impartial, and I haven't met that many developers, so. But if I did, I've worked with other engineering firms, I've worked with McKenna &amp; Associates. I actually, one thing I did is I wrote the Recreation Master Plan back in 2012 by hand, by this hand, and now McKenna is doing this current one. So like I said, I, it's a strange hobby to have, but it is one that I am passionate about in improving my community. And I don't have a problem with making the economic argument that the decisions we make here affect everyone in this community, and we would like to increase and maintain and increase property values. Doing so, the redevelopment and improvement of our city as we go forward, I think it needs a plan. And I'm, as I said, the master plan is a start, but that's only a blueprint, so to speak, and a broad guide of where we would like to go as a community.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Nothing? Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and from what I read, the other applicant is quite qualified, too, so please give her a fair hearing as well, and may the best person be selected. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Mr. Lessig.
Paul, you want to get there?
I'm just making initials.
Hi.
Hello.
Welcome. Can you please just introduce yourself first?
My name is Renee Meyer. I've been a resident, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I've been a resident.
Go a little closer, though. Pull the mic.
Okay.
Be easier.
Hello, my name is Renee Meyer. I've been a resident of Frazier for over 50 years. I am an employee of Stucky Vitale Architects. I've been there for two and a half years. My title is architectural professional. I've done many projects in the city of Frazier, working at architectural
Working at architectural firms, Quinlan Associates, Stucky Vitale Architects. I worked in 1993 on the construction drawings for the senior center on 15 Mile Road and Utica. In that same year, our architectural firm had the, we did the construction administration for the senior housing that's next door to the senior citizens center. And what I did with that was the contractors would send in their applications for payment, and then I would go through the contract, check it over, and then if I saw any discrepancies, I would give them to my boss. He would do the second look-through, and then he would approve the payments. Just recently, I, at Stucky Vitale Architects, I worked on the National Coney Island at 15 and, 15 and Utica. We did the construction drawings. We, our firm did not do the original building. We did the tenant build-out for the, for the National Coney Island. I have experience in reading, reading documents as well as doing the zoning, zoning board, sorry, I'm nervous. I have experience looking through the zoning as well as the planning, planning documents to make sure that a project can pass through site plan approval.
Well, you didn't even have to give us all that, because I'm going to ask you the same question, probably, what you just said.
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's good. Relax, this is very easygoing, and questions aren't that hard. So you already answered the first one. How long have you lived in Frazier, so over 50 years?
Yes.
Okay. Are you currently, or have you ever served on any board in Frazier, and how did you hear about this open position for the Planning Commission?
Actually, I was talking to my neighbor, and she said, you know, there's a position open in Frazier, and you need to be on that commission. And so we were talking about it, and she said, you know, there's planning and zoning. And she said, but I think you should try for the planning department because of your experience. She said, I think that's where you should be. So I tried.
Good, more people need to have a desire for that, I believe. Have you ever appeared before the Planning Commission, either in Frazier or in another city, which you have, with your experience, probably, and
No, I haven't.
Yeah, okay. So that covers that one pretty much. And you heard about, heard about the open position from the neighbor. Why do you want to serve on the PC, though?
Because I think with my knowledge of drawings and looking up codes and things like that, I think I have experience that I can look at something that comes in and I can evaluate a project to see whether or not it meets the requirements.
Okay, good. Are you involved with anything that may pose a conflict in serving on this board? For example, are you currently employed by the city of Frazier, or you, or have you been involved in litigation against the city of Frazier? Or do you currently own a business in the city?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Yeah, this is a question I don't think will be a problem, but can you read blueprints, both commercial and residential?
Yes.
Okay. And are you able to visit the properties prior to, from the applicants, prior to the meetings?
How, how much time would?
A week.
A week?
Yes.
I would think so, because my boss is a, he's a member of the Gross Point Woods Planning Commission, and he has been on the Planning Commission for 30 years. And when I told, when I talked to him about, you know, going to apply, he said, do it. He said, you need to do this, you're good, you know, he said, you have, you have the knowledge, so I don't think that would be a problem.
Okay. Can you attend all the meetings, which are held the first Wednesday of every month?
Yes.
Okay. What do you hope to see in the city of Frazier in the next 20 years?
I hope to see that some of the industrial areas in the 15 Mile corridor, that we build that area back up, because I know that there's some places that, that are empty, and I think that that needs to be looked at. There's a lot of, there's a lot of retail that I think with some encouragement, that we need to, we need to develop that area, like, for example, the strip mall at 15 and Hays. There's other areas in the city that I think that we need to build those areas up, because when, when they move out, people aren't encouraged to go in and develop those areas. So I think those are two areas that So, I think those are two areas that need to be looked at.
So, briefly, of course, I'm going into stuff you probably already said, but why are you qualified to serve on the board, and why do you think we should choose you over other applicants?
My knowledge of drawings, of putting together drawings, my ability to read drawings, my knowledge of the zoning ordinance, and the ability to comprehend what the setbacks, the rules and that are, that I think I would be a good candidate to help with your commission.
See how easy it was? You relaxed down by the end. Okay, that's all I got. Does anybody else have anything that they wish to ask?
You mentioned that your firm is involved with several, building several things within the city of Frazier. What happens if they come before this board and you have to plan on that? Are they continuing to work in this area?
Yes, they do. Not, I mean, it's, it's, it's a come, it's not... We do work in this area, but the last one we did was a couple of years ago.
Okay. And if there's any conflict, I mean, we could, we would always, I'm sure we'd have to stop or abstain from voting. Would that be, Mr. Andrews?
Yes, that was what I was going to say. If her firm had a matter before the planning commission, and she was a member of the planning commission, she would not be able to vote on that particular matter, because her firm had an interest in the outcome of it. And she could abstain and from participating in that. Probably it wouldn't happen that often or whatever, but...
But it could happen, so...
It could happen, and I think she should know from the outset that that would be expected of her, and that her employer ought to know that, too, because it...
Yeah, so they know.
She can't, she can't be in a position where she's potentially influence, having extra influence because of her position on the commission.
You understand that, then?
Absolutely.
So, we'd expect you to confront your employer with that?
Right.
And so they, that in their mind, they're thinking, "Oh, here's a vote." Okay, I think, I appreciate you coming, spending your time here. Oh, another one?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Andrews to please assist me with this. But not only if Ms. Meyer was, you know, had you abstained on a vote on a project that Stuckey Vitale is involved in, would she not have to recuse herself through even the discussion?
Yes, she should, she would not be participating.
I just wanted to make that clear to you, too. It would be a matter of you recusing yourself and stepping out of the room and not even participating in the subject. Do you work full-time for Stuckey Vitale?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, thanks. Okay, no, Commissioner Barr.
You convinced me that you, I mean, I know you know about buildings and all that type of stuff. Are you also familiar with other things such as neighborhoods and how it would affect a neighborhood more than just...
Can you get your mic down to you, please? Pull your mic down to you.
Turn it, oh.
I'll pull it. Yeah, you'll get it up to it. You want to turn it on? No, no. The button.
Should I start over? You know about architect, no doubt about that. You're very experienced in that. What about the other parts of it, such as how this would affect a neighborhood, or how people might object to a building? Are you interested, let's say interested, because anybody can learn, you know, to also consider that as well as whether a building is structurally sound?
Yes, yes, I think that's important.
I do, too.
Yeah, absolutely. And there's different, depending on the type of, the type of building it is. I heard earlier someone talking about marijuana facilities, and I know that that's a hot topic. That could be something that could cause a lot of issues, let's say, if that came before the planning. And I know that it may not be popular, but if it's something that's acceptable within the ordinance, then you have to calmly explain the reasons why you agree with their proposal or disagree with their proposal.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, again, thanks for your time. Appreciate your welcome to sit through our meeting as long as you want. Did Mr. Lessig leave, or has he at least let him know then? And right now, if we can all make your choice and pass it...
Well, you prioritize, right? You're going to put priority.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you just, just, just put, okay, just put an X over, though, if you need or whatever. You didn't want and two?
One and two.
Yeah, put one and two. Let's do it that way. Put a one and a two. One for the one first, yeah.
Be one and two.
Prioritizing.
First choice, second...
Oh, you don't put names?
Yeah, well, put, put a, put a one by the one, and the other will be a two automatically.
Why do we need one?
You don't.
They put a little box around it.
I didn't know it would be that confusing, but we'll...
No, I agree.
Pass them down? So, basically, we send these down to the attorney and Mr. Urbil, and they will do the counting and give us a...
You're welcome.
Your choice, the choice. Oh, yeah, this will just be a recommendation, just so you, since you're both here, too. It is a recommendation to council. The council still has the final word, so... We do have six. We're short. We need a person on the board.
But, I mean, the city council can still have that information to know...
Yeah, that's what's happened, so that's what we're going to give them.
...you know, believes that both people are well-qualified by a divided vote, you know.
Okay.
Very good.
Good, that's what we'll, so we'll make that recommendation to council.
We're essentially recommending you both to council. Okay? And it's, you know, it'll be up to council.
Thank you for participating.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Appreciate you coming forward and to the city to, you know, to do something more for the city.
Can we ask the administration, do we know what city council meeting these recommendations will go forward?
I believe I'll tell. The packet goes out tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
So, when I spoke with City Manager Levin, I did mention that obviously I would be here tonight to see the actions that he took tonight, the recommending reappointment of three city members, and that you've had interviews.
Okay. I encourage both of you to attend the city council.
That's exactly what I was going to say. So, that would be a week from tomorrow at 7:00? 6:30, okay. Okay.
Oh, bad.
All right, so, we've got that, and so we can move forward now, and Mr. Urbil has some presentations for the, first for the annual report 2021.
Yes, so, as you know, per the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, each year, the planning commission is obligated to provide a report to the city council of planning and development activities for the prior year. We've drafted that and provided it in your packet. You have a hard copy sitting in front of you now. We drafted this first in November, and Commissioner Kyle's name was omitted from the version that went out with this packet. It's just a typographical error that I had exercised in the last one. My apologies, Commissioner Kyle, but the one in front of you is the one that I guess we would propose, pending any of your edits, we would send to city council. I'm happy to answer any questions. Behind the actual report is a sort of look-ahead, a work plan for 2022, which is not a binding document. It's simply a sort of projection based on, this one is sort of easy since the master plan was passed in July. The 2022 work plan is basically a summary of high-level recommendations in the master plan and things that we might start implementing first.
Okay, thank you. It looks real good. It looks very thorough. Any questions from Mr. Urbil on this?
Of course, thank you.
Oh, wow, they're all, or did I not push things? Okay, Commissioner Blank, and Commissioner... Okay, Zarnicki.
Thank you, Chair Wollnig. Mr. Urbil, you mentioned the two projects coming, going, working ahead, the DDA and sign ordinance. Do you know what approach you might take, and will you be tackling that this year?
So, the city manager is new, fairly new. So, I have been talking to the administration about these priorities, about what might, we might do. I know that there is contemplation of a more significant ordinance overhaul. So, I think the question is whether or not the sign ordinance is part of that or goes first. And the DDA, I think, is a master plan recommendation that needs to be at least contemplated.
Right, okay, thank you.
And you'll keep us board up-to-date on all that?
Absolutely.
So, if there's changes. And I think you got everybody's email, if there is something sooner even that is going to happen quicker, like if they're going to be at a council meeting that they're, or if they're going to look at ordinances and things like that, give us some heads-up early then?
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate that. Well, let's, we need a motion to accept and to file, so do we have a motion?
I so moved to accept the annual report as written.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Zarnicki and supported by Commissioner Farina. Do we need to do a roll call, or do you want, do we just do a, for this?
We're doing a motion to accept this.
I think you can do a voice vote.
Just a voice one? So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Do you want to accept this?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody against? Any nays? Okay, motion is approved to accept and file the 2021 annual planning report. Thanks for that.
I think it should be forwarded to the city council rather than...
Yes.
Should it, on that, too?
Tomorrow, the packet goes out, so if you approve this tonight, then we should be able to get it in the consent agenda paperwork.
Oh, okay, good.
Very good.
So, do we do that with the calendar, too? The same way?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, before that, though, we've got to elect planning commissioner officers before we do the calendar, so that's the next thing on the agenda. Do we have to...
I recommend...
Do each position at a time, then? And so, what should we start with?
Chairman.
Chairman, then? Any recommendations? Commissioner Farina?
I recommend Randy Warnock for chairman. He has to complete one term.
I'll support it.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Farina.
Seconded.
And support by Commissioner Kyle, but we need acceptance first, so, all right, I accept.
Any other motions? Any other people?
Any, yeah, are there any other motions for that position? So, we want to vote on each one right away, then?
By a commission, by default.
Or is it, it's a default thing?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, your bylaws say that if there's only one nomination, that that person is deemed to have been selected.
All right, so, I guess we got that position, then. So, we move on to the next, which is vice chair, I believe? Okay, do we have any nominations for that, or Commissioners Zarnicki?
Mr. Chair, I nominate John Kyle for vice chair.
John Kyle, do we have any support on that?
I'll support.
Smart, okay, so, motion by Commissioner Zarnicki and support by Commissioner Perry for John Kyle. John, do you accept?
I'll accept.
John accepts. Do we have any other motions? Any other nominations, I mean? Seeing none, I guess we, John, you are automatically...
You manage to be out of danger back.
You better study up. And our only other position is, what, secretary? How do we do, yeah, secretary. So, any nominations for secretary?
I nominate Mr. Perry.
I'll support.
For another, for another term, right? Now, first question of the city attorney, because we didn't, we had this before. It's two terms maximum for every, every position? I think this is, Commissioner Perry's second, anyway.
Secretary, this is my first term.
This is your, yeah, your first full term.
Who's the secretary?
No, he was.
I'm just saying, the whole three years I've been up here, I wasn't secretary. You guys nominated me, I think, last year.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's by year, it's not by term.
Okay.
It's yearly. I think two years was a max, wasn't it?
I thought it was two terms.
No, I thought it's...
Section 3 of the bylaws of Article 5 says, "A member of the planning commission may be elected to the same office for no more than two successive years."
Okay.
Yes.
With the exception of the Office of Secretary.
Oh, so Secretary could go on.
Right.
So, you might be, you might be old and gray by the time you're done with that.
That's if council approves me here.
All right, so we, did we, we had a motion, do we get a, yeah, and we got a support? And by, oh, anybody else? Anybody, any other nominations? So, I close, close nominations, and by default, Commissioner Perry, do you accept?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, so, there we are. We got, I think, our officers.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks to all. So, we got one more thing in new business, and that's 2022 planning commission calendar. Did everybody get a chance to go through and the dates on that? I, as one, they look good to me. They didn't conflict, I don't think. The closest thing was July's, two days after the Fourth of July.
And Labor Day.
And Labor Day was, yeah, yeah. So, do we have any motions, or first discussion?
It doesn't affect me, but some, some people work here. A lot of companies shut down for two weeks after the Fourth of July weekend and next week. Does that affect anybody here?
Yeah, not me.
Nobody's affected by that?
No.
Okay. And we won't know who our seventh member is, so we can't. We're not going to worry about that right now. So, we, we just need a motion then to accept and the same thing. It's got to be presented, or is this a file one?
No, it gets approved, and then it gets published, I think.
Okay, but it doesn't have to go to council?
No.
Okay, so it'd be a motion, publish, and file.
Right.
Okay, do we have a motion on that?
I'll move to...
That's fine, don't take it, take it. No, no. You go, Frank. I'll hold a second, how's that?
Okay, there we go. We have motion.
I move to approve the planning commission meeting calendar, post and file and forward to council.
And support by Commissioner Perry. So, motion by Commissioner Farina, support by Commissioner Perry. And we do the same thing with the, do we have to vote on that?
You have to vote on it.
You have to vote on it, but it could be a voice vote.
Yeah, we can do a voice. Okay. So all that. Accept that? Any ayes? Ayes?
Aye. Aye.
Aye? Any nays? No nays?
I have a question for our attorney. You're you're saying ayes are okay. You know, when Don was here, he said everything has to be roll call.
Well, I think substantive case items, I agree with him. I'm not sure I agree with him with. I'll talk to him about that.
Okay.
Now, that could have been when we were Zoomed because you couldn't really.
That's true. The Zoom.
See or hear. So I think the.
Special rules.
Yeah. So that might have been the the case on that. Okay. So we've gotten through the new business. We go to unfinished business. And that is 01-19 S U B. Max Mancini, Garfield Park Sub Parcels 1 through 10, proposed site plan amendment extension. Mr. Mancini is in the audience. Can you please come forward to the stand?
Oh, Max.
And give us your name and address?
My name is Max Mancini. My address is 41744 Stonehenge Manor, Clinton Township, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Urbil, do you have anything to present on that?
Just in recap, as everyone's aware, you postponed this a couple of times, but this is a request to amend a site plan that was originally approved in 2005. And the request is to amend the site plan to reflect what has been constructed to date rather than what the original site plan was. And the increment between those two is a house on what's called parcel five at the end of Anita Avenue. The we've had much discussion about this. The 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 original site plan proposal had a road that terminated in front of parcel five, which would allow parcel five to be built on with access to a a public road. This one does not or the the site plan amendment would leave that parcel without that access until time as a as a road would be built. I think this originated as a desire to or as a as an attempt to ensure that never in the future does the city have a maintenance problem with the vacant lot. I think the, as we've discussed, the applicant and the commissioner have discussed a solution to this that does not compromises the lot and would would omit the concerns that the administration has had is to combine Lot four with Lot five. I put in your packet memo with some of the some of what I understand events to be since you postponed it last. We maintain that that combining lots is the solution that would allow this site plan amendment. And we recommend that that would be a condition of any approval, only because without that, I think it's not in the city's interest to to have two lots there and approve the site plan as it is. I know that's been postponed before, but the applicant can tell you that I think there it seems to me that progress has been made, but the lots are not combined, which was the the desire of the commission last time.
Okay, thanks. Do you do applicant have anything to add to that? Maybe give us a little more info on that?
I apologize for not being completely informed on our Zoom meetings, probably because I am not very savvy with the technology. And I wasn't able to express myself, I think, as well as I wanted to during the Zoom meetings. I have been going through the process as the planning commission has requested, and I am about 95% there. And because of the extension or the delay of our last meeting or or because of our meeting was canceled, I think our last meeting was canceled that we were scheduled for. It gave me some time to take a look and see how we got to where we are. And I'd like to take this opportunity, if I may, to express some of my thoughts. It seems to me that the planning commission has been advised by McKenna that approving the site amendment would be against the planning commission's goal because it would be planning, they would be approving an unbuildable and a nonconforming lot. And that was brought at the very beginning, I think, in our February 3rd meeting in 2021, I believe. And that was our first, that was my first Zoom meeting. And it was all awash, and I didn't quite understand it. But and I I took verbatim everything that was being mentioned to the planning commission. And I'm like, okay, well, if we have to. And and their advice was to sell the lot to the owner of the last lot, the last home I built on 17088 Anita, and then combine it to avoid being in a position of approving a site plan that would develop or were to allow a unbuildable, nonconforming lot. So then I started looking. How come is this? How is this lot unbuildable and nonconforming? It it seemed a little mind boggling to me. So the more research I did on it, the more I found out that that's not the case. This lot is does not fit in a nonconforming or unbuildable position. So before I sit down and continue with the course that we have set through the past meetings, I'd like to ask a few questions, if I may, to McKenna on how they determine this lot to be unbuildable and nonconforming. As you all know, this I've had this property for a long time. I've been a lifelong resident of Frazier. I've been here since 1975. Grew up here, went to elementary school, high school, graduated and so forth, stayed in Frazier. My parents still live in Frazier. They're still down the street here around Garfield. I do everything I can to keep maintain the property and keep it in good shape. And as such, I always knew of that vacant land down there on Garfield Park subdivision that was platted back in 1926, I think. And between 1985 and 1990, bought pieces of it, put it together, and came to the city council many times to try to find a solution to build on a plat that was obsolete after close to 100 years. And we worked on it diligently for quite some time to arrive to the 10 lots that had been presented on the site. It wasn't easy when we did it. And then when we submitted that, that lot was that plan, that site was submitted in 1996. And shortly after the submission submitting that, the Great Recession hit, and it set idle for a long time. And it was difficult to keep the taxes, to keep paying the taxes on it and the interest. But I did. And also, I went out there and mowed it by hand because I couldn't afford to have someone. But I did everything I can to maintain that property. And we finally got to the point to start developing it. And that wasn't until 2012, six years later. And it took some time. And it was rough going. I couldn't find, I didn't have the resource to build on it. So I had to go out and find some partners, some builders to help me. And sometimes they didn't do a good job either. And I had to step in and building officials might know that I had to step in and help out on some areas where they didn't fulfill their obligations. And I took care of that. So it came down to the last lot, which brought us here. It's always been, I was always developing certain sections that needed, whatever infrastructure needed, whether it was sewer or water or the road or sidewalks for each lot. And then I would develop them for that lot. And then once they were developed for that lot, I would give the building permit for that lot, and I would build a house and move on to the next lot and do the same thing and move on to the next lot. So that went on for, you know, the whole project. I would develop the certain area. And if if that lot had those services, then I could get the building permit, and I would build a house. And if you go and take a look at those houses, they're probably I I might be a little swayed because I built built them, but they're the best houses in Garfield Park subdivision. And their assessment will will contest to that. So then I the last house, I wasn't expecting a 19, the last house, 17088, to be in a position where the building official came to me and said, you need to get a site amendment or I'm not going to give you the certificative occupancy. What do you mean? I mean, I've been getting certificative occupancy for every one all along. And this is the this is the this is how we've been doing it. Nope. None of you don't get a site amendment because it it was already known that I was not going to build on Lot five. I mean, that I had told the building department and the DPW and everybody. At that time, it was pretty much a lot of people that I had grown up with, and we spoke openly. And I'm like, no, this is going to be my last one here on 17088. Nobody ever said anything. When it came time to get the certificative occupancy, that's where I was being requested to do to get a site amendment for to before I could get a finish on that lot. What happened is the building official, and I have letters in here, stated that he was going to turn my license into the State Department if I didn't get an approved site amendment. And to this time, I'm still getting letters about that. So that's what brought us here for the site amendment, for the site amendment. And when I first presented it, everybody listened to me, this panel and everybody here in this panel, a lot of people here in this panel, listened to me and understood. And they were concerned about the one concern we had that was brought to my attention was turnaround access for the safety vehicles. Because Anita came to a dead end. The original site plan has Anita continuing another 160 feet for another dead end. So with the concern of the safety vehicles on my site amendment, I had mentioned that the fire department uses the VFW hall for the turnaround access. And then the great concern was, well, how do we know if we can use the parking lot of the VFW hall for the turnaround access? And I'm like, well, we've been using it a lot of times. And then it was presented to me to either go and get a easement from the VFW hall to make sure that we have that access there indefinitely. So I went through the process of contacting the VFW hall and getting in touch with the fire department, the chief of the fire department and so forth, to assure that we're going to have access at the end of the road on Anita has has the amendment shows, which right at the end there is is the entrance to the parking lot. And in that process, I found out that that parking lot is actually on public road. It's on Frazier Drive. It at one time was vacated, but it wasn't completely entitled back to the VFW hall within a certain timeframe. So it falls back into the city of Frazier. So in going through all that and addressing that, and it took some time, I had been assured, and then I talked with the the fire chief, and he was confident that that was sufficient enough for his vehicles to turn around. And I presented, and I was ready to present that on the February 3rd, 2021 meeting. And and there were some extensions and so forth before that. But and that meeting, that's when we had, I think that was my first Zoom meeting. And if you remember, we were, everybody was kind of in shock at that time. It was three months into COVID. And, you know, and and I was in shock too because I had COVID in November. And a good Frazier resident who I caught it from, sharing a beer, he he didn't make it, and his parents didn't make it. So I was really concerned. And it might it it might have skewed my judgment a little bit, but it it put me perhaps in a position where I wasn't prepared for what had come across. And at that meeting, there's some things that came in. And I was prepared to to address the issue that, hey, we're okay here. The VFW is the hall, the VFW parking lot is 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 there, is indefinite. It's not, and it's there for the fire trucks to turn around, and we're good. I I think we're satisfied. We have enough information to satisfy what I was sent out to find out. But at that point in time, it wasn't no longer the VFW hall in the emergency vehicles turnaround. It was the issue of Lot five not being built. I wasn't prepared for that. And so I was listening to McKenna and their recommendations. And they were recommending it to deny the request because it would it would allow it would allow a lot that is unbuildable and nonconforming. And I took it for verbatim too. And they said, yes, now you have to sell the lot to the adjacent owner and combine it to the adjacent owner in order for this site amendment to be approved. And it was all new news to me. And then from that moment on, I continued through that course. I took everything that was mentioned to and has the planning commission listened. And I went to the owner that I had sold the lot to to sell that property. And in the process of negotiating, he took a job down south and sold his house. So now I had to wait for that to settle through and then pursue the new owner to sell the lot to the new owner. And in the process, I did. And then we're still not finished with it. We still have to finish the combination of it, which I'm working on. But this past month, when I have a little more time, I'm like, let me take a look at this. Why is this lot unbuildable and nonconforming? I was a little concerned because the more I started looking at it, the more that wasn't the case. That kind of threw me back. How could that be? For one, nonconforming. And I think Ms. Drexler had mentioned. She states on page five of the February 3rd meeting that approving the amended site plan would render Lot five nonconforming and that the planning commission is not to is not permitted to approve a site plan that would produce a nonconforming lot. Well, how could you approve such an amendment if you're given that information? I said, okay, let's take a look at the code, the city code of what a nonconforming lots are. Nonconforming lots. Any lot which of record, December 26, 1996, that does not meet the requirements of this chapter for lot width and depth and available space for yards. Well, when we plant, when we split those lots, we looked at it and made sure that it fulfilled those requirements. That lot fills those requirements. I can't understand how it could be a nonconforming lot. Nonconforming use, perhaps they're using nonconforming use, is a building or land that does not conform to the use regulations of the district in which it is located. That's a single family residential lot. It falls within the conforming use of the surrounding properties. If you want to take a look at the the code, I have it here. I can pass it to it to you if you'd rather look at it for yourself. So I I questioned, how can that be a nonconforming lot? And Mr. Urbil is here. I can ask him now. How how could this be a nonconforming lot?
Would you like me to address that?
Yes, please.
All right. I think the zoning ordinance, there's a general provision in zoning. I think the zoning ordinance, there's a general provision in the zoning ordinance that says that a building is not able to be built on a lot that does not have access to an improved public or private street, road, or highway. The site plan was approved where this lot was, had that access. The amendment that's proposed, that lot does not have that access, so with nothing else happening, if the amendment is approved, that lot is not buildable, because a parcel or a principal structure would not be permitted to be built in, on that lot without the improvement of the road. So, the increment between the site plan approval, the original site plan approval and the proposed amendment, was that there's a lot that would require infrastructure and road to be built, to build a building on. That's the definition of unbuildable. I don't think there was a contention that the lot does not meet the dimensional requirements, but that's, I guess that's basically the essence of our recommendation, is that the site plan, as originally proposed, had a road in front of the lot. The amendment does not, that lot is not buildable without investment by someone in the future. Hence, the recommendation that combining lots would obviate all of those concerns, because then it would be part of parcel four, would have access to an improved road, and then there's really no harm in approving an amendment, as is proposed.
Is that basically, I think we're coming to terminology more with conforming and buildable and non-buildable, because it does conform, it sounds like the lot conforms, but you can't build on it without the frontage.
Correct.
So, it is buildable, except for, if that, if the front was improved.
Yes.
The road, sewer, then it would be buildable.
Correct.
Now, might not, and that just personal, I know with the floodplain and that, it would need to be elevated, maybe no basement, and so there are some issues, but it's still buildable, if that works done.
It means the dimensional requirements, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Andrews.
When that original development was put together, it showed that that street was going to front, be extended to include that last lot.
Yes.
And as some of you probably are aware of, in many instances, for example, in connection with a, say, a typical platted subdivision that's done, in today's standards, normally before people can start getting building permits, they have to have all of the improvements in, or they alternatively have to put up money in order to guarantee that those improvements are made. But that didn't occur in this particular instance, and as Mr. Mancini indicated, in this instance, he was allowed to do it site by site, or parcel by parcel, and extend the utility on a, or the street on a single basis. That's not usually the case, but he would not have been, in my opinion, he would not have been, gotten approval for a buildable site for that last lot if he had said, "I'm not going to build the road there, and I'm not going to extend utilities there." They, the city would have, at that point in time, said, "You're going to get one fewer lot out of this than what you thought you were going to get," because if you're going to, if the city wants buildable lots, not lots that potentially become nuisance situations because they aren't taken care of. So, in this instance, he has sought permission to eliminate the requirement that he extend that street and put in that utility and amend the site plan accordingly. And as I understand McKenna's position, if that was considered to be a separate lot, they were not supportive of that, because they felt that what was ending up happening by that site plan amendment then, without the street being extended and without the utilities going in, is that they would end up with a lot that didn't meet the city requirements. So they were recommending against that. Now, as we toiled our way through this, the suggestion, I mean, I think all of us were trying to figure out a solution to this that would work for everybody, and one of the things that came about was that if Lot 4 and 5 were combined, then those two things would be considered one lot, and the lot that was already built on with the house had frontage on a road, and did in fact have public utilities, and if those were combined as one zoning lot, then the unbuiltability of that last parcel went away, because, so that was the reason that this commission pursued that avenue, was that they were attempting to resolve the problem of having a lot that didn't comply with the building requirements of the city, which included that it have frontage on a public thoroughfare and have public utilities. And as many of you know, if you create a development by a subdivision that requires that the utilities and the road go in, if you do it by a condominium, that same requirement is there. And the third way that it occurs is through the land division ordinance, which is pursuant to a state law, and that also requires that there be frontage if the zoning ordinance requires it, at Fraser's, like most community does. So, I respectfully disagree with his conclusion that, I mean, I think it is somewhat of a semantical thing. I mean, non-conforming is something that is sometimes loosely used in order to meet, to say that it doesn't meet all the requirements of the ordinance, but from a technical, legal perspective, non-conforming is different than that. It doesn't mean that it doesn't, it means that an ordinance was changed in midstream, and something that used to be lawful is now not lawful. And Mr. Mancini is correctly citing the definition of non-conforming under the zoning ordinance, and I think that there's a possibility that when Ms. Traxler spoke about it, she was speaking in terms of whether it complied with all of the building and zoning requirements for a lot to be built upon. But in any event, I think that's kind of water over the dam at this point, but that's my opinion.
Well, I don't want to get carried, hold on one second, I just want to address, because Mr. Mancini's in the middle of his presentation, and I don't want to go way off on tangents. I know he was, though, talking to Mr. Erbule and the attorneys saying that, and I think, since I was involved with all that originally, I think a history thing real quick, because of the things you said, the subdivision of a platted subdivision, this was platted back in 1920s in a different.
Era.
In a different setup, too. So he, so when you started talking about land division, that made me think, real quick, that this was more geared like land division, because it wasn't replatted.
Right.
It was just property lines.
Reconfigured by.
Reconfigured, yes. So, maybe in that, I think, is what Mr. Mancini is saying, that he developed them one at a time. So that may be different, I don't want to confuse anybody, like a platted sub, you would build all the roads, they'd be done. This might be looked at differently, and he was probably doing it right by doing the improvements as he went along. So I don't want to confuse the two, because it definitely wasn't a platted, it was platted, but not for this subdivision, the way it went.
And my, I wasn't practicing law in 1920, but I suspect that the requirements that you put in the improvements or put up money was something that came about in the 60s or 70s, not in the 1920s. And my, so, but, and if he had constructed houses on the platted lots as they were originally established back in 1920, then there would be.
We wouldn't even have any issues, right.
But obviously, most people wanted to build houses on bigger parcels than what those were originally planted as. And as you indicated, that involved some reconfiguration of what was, what happened from the original plan.
Yes.
And that's an important point that I like to address, because I think that we're using a standard of today, today's standard, and the majority of times, if somebody comes to amend a site plan, that site plan has the roads platted also. This road was platted almost 100 years ago. It wasn't a vacant, a big parcel of land that I purchased, and then I platted, along with plating roads and so forth, and saying, "This is what I'm going to develop," and then come and say, "I'm not going to develop a portion of it." No, it was just, I purchased land that was adjacent to a platted road. And so I was developing those infrastructures that were already platted and were a part of the city. They're not, they weren't under my ownership that I had to develop and then deed over to the city, like you would see in the majority of developments that are taking place now. That wasn't the case here. So, perhaps some of the decisions might have been skewed, because they're thinking, the thinking is, "This is how we normally do it." Because normally, you're not going to have a developer who's going to be building houses on something that was platted nearly 100 years ago. It's a very unique situation here.
But that road did have to be extended to accommodate Lot 5.
If that lot, if that Lot 5 is going to be built at any time, yes. Never, never would I, in any of those lots, did I try to circumvent the development for that lot prior to building. And so the development of Anita has to be fulfilled before a building permit would be issued on Lot 5. The city has the control of that. No one can build on Lot 5 until Anita is developed. Then the city would issue a building permit on it. And I would think it would be best interest for the city to continue to have that lot available at that position, because you never know what's going to happen with a lot of that vacant land back there. The city might decide to sell that to a developer in the near future, or the long future. And a developer might connect Anita, put a bridge over Sweeney Drain and connect Anita for the flow of traffic and as well as the flow of the water, because I know that AEW would like that, you know? And then, it would eliminate any concerns about safety vehicles turnaround and so forth, and they might be developing to the, I don't know, 5, 6 acres to the north of that, with several more with a little subdivision, and this Lot 5 would then be able to be developed with a lot and add to the city tax base.
Hold on one second. I want to be procedural right here, and there was an involvement between Mr. Erbule with questioning back and forth, and I have a commissioner that has a question. Can we do that, we have to wait for? Can we take questions since we're on a topic, and if it relates to that topic? And Mr. Farina?
First of all, you said you met with the building department and officials, and it was approved by them to do it the way you did it. What building official?
When I met, I'm sorry, Mr. Farina, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
There was, you met with the building officials, DPW, and other, and the fire department.
Well, I worked on, you mean for the turnaround access?
For the site plan.
When I originally was working on putting this together.
Sanitary sewers and.
Sanitary sewers, and, okay. So yes, I met with BJ at the DPW, when BJ was in control of there, and talked to him about, you know, the certain requirements that he wanted in the development of the infrastructure. I met with Mr. Van Fleneren, who was the fire chief back then, and discussing using the VFW parking lot for the turnaround, and I've got, I got his approval that was sufficient for him. So I follow through and talk to everybody, it wasn't like something that I was doing.
My question was, what building official did you meet with?
Well, Randy was the, when I first put this together, it was Tim Wood was the building official back then. When I first put this together, it was.
Your original submission, sir?
The original submission was, when I was working on the original submission, it was Tim Wood. That's how far back it goes.
You, and I'm just going to refer, you quoted Sarah's letter of 2019.
Correct.
And page four, it says, "Infrastructure: The planning commission shall consider the city engineer's evaluation of the adequacy of public or private services and utilities proposed to service the site, including water, sanitary sewers, and stormwater retention. The city engineer's review letter is attached and addresses the infrastructure. Engineer notes that the sanitary sewer was only extended to the Westbury side of parcel four, and no public sewer exists in front of parcel five, and that any future extension of the sanitary service to the east will require future construction in front of parcel four and five." Okay? That was not, that it wasn't unconforming, it's, that's.
Yeah, I put a manhole right there, and I talked to.
Well, that's what the city engineer recommended, not just McKenna, but the city engineer.
Correct. And if I believe your, in that letter, Mr. Vigron said he would like to see the water extended all the way through to Anita, to give it a loop and not have anywhere where it stays stagnant. And he also mentioned other things about, at the end of the road, either a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead, or to see it extended all the way through.
But anytime during your, by your own submission, you did this 15 years. You could have come and said, "I want to change the site plan 15 years," and not waited till the end, and you decided not to build on that lot, to say, "I'm not going to meet the site plan."
Well, the reason why it was at the very end was because I had ongoing verbal conversations and a good relationship with the building official. And I had mentioned it many times, without any recourse, or like, "Okay, you know, that's fine."
Intent was always to build that and to extend that.
Right.
So when he says, what the engineer says, "It ended at four, part of four," so he had to continue through four and then do in front of five. So that's where the extension of the road would have been.
Mr. Vigron, correct. And if I remember right, Mr. Vigron also said at that time that the city of Fraser is a little unique, where building standards are perhaps done. is a little unique, where, um, um, building standards are perhaps done a little bit unconventional as opposed to other places. Where he said some, some leads might be going in on the angles and so forth, and, uh, and it's not uncommon. So it, it was a practice that, uh, that I was doing from, uh, the very first time. Not that we circumvented building standards whatsoever, but, uh, it wasn't all in black and white. There were some variances that were, uh, that were, uh, approved.
ZBA-approved variances.
I don't mean those kind of variances. I mean variances from, uh, not being, uh, a ninety-degree angle. And maybe it might be in a thirty, a forty-five-degree angle going into the water lead. And we're talking about things that we're doing underground, uh, at twelve feet underground. Or, uh, uh, if there was a union that we were allowed to collar it, and, uh, and Mr. Foster would come over and watch us collar it, uh, with brick and make sure that it was all said and done, that perhaps in some other areas, it might not be, uh, a standard.
Does that mean it didn't meet the standard?
No, it met the standard. It would not be a standard perhaps for someone else. It, it was considered okay.
They were all approved with inspections.
Yes. Everything was done with it. There was nothing that wasn't done without an inspection. What happened here was the building official was changed on my last month of finishing this house. And perhaps the standards were changed a little bit too, to that building officials, that I was not aware of, nor was I expecting. That's what brought me here.
Commissioner Zornicki.
I just want to make it clear to myself, as well to people in the public, and, and all due respect to Chair Warnock, can we make it clear that when he's speaking, building official, he's not speaking about you as a former building official?
Give a name.
And you've been working with him on this project?
Give, give a name, is what you're talking.
Give, give a name.
When you say the word "building official"--
And I want to make it clear to everybody in the audience that there's no conflict of interest if you were working with Mr., with Chair Warnock. Have you been working with Chair Warnock on this project? I mean, he wasn't Chair Warnock when you were back working on--
He wasn't Chair Warnock. He was, he was, he was the bill-- he was the building official. He was a building official when I was working on this project, correct.
And, and then, Mr. Andrews, is there a conflict of interest of any kind?
Well, I think, I think it, I think to the extent that, that, um, I think to the extent that, that Mr. Warnock would be voting on something that he participated in as, as a, when he was a building official, then I think he should abstain with respect to that, uh, item. If, if it related to something that, that did not, you know, did not impact this, um, then he would be able to vote. But, but I think that if, if, if at the time that, if, if what's coming up now involves things that he made in his decision as a building official when he was in that capacity, I think that, that, uh, that's a problem. Because I, I, when, when, when Randy's, um, consideration with respect to becoming a planning commissioner was discussed, um, I know that Don Denald and I had discussions about that, and, and we felt that, that if, if the decisions related to things that did not involve him in, in having direct participation as a building official, that the fact that he had some experience that would be beneficial to the planning commission would not be a problem. But to the extent that he would be voting on things that he participated in the process as a building official on that particular project, I think that that, then, that's, that's a conflict.
And I can give a little background of that, at least where, when, when I ended as building official, this wasn't a, uh, was not an issue. It never came forward to amend the site plan. That was all done after--
Right.
--when, um, building official Wright cited, um--
Correct.
--the petitioner.
I think Mr. Wright placed this on me, because first of all, no one notified me that there was a new building official. I was working on that house on myself inside for forty-five days, to the point where then I placed Lot Five up for sale, and the building department was getting inundated with phone calls, trying to find out, think, for the due diligence of prospective buyers. And Mr. Wright called me. Mr. Wright told me, "You've got to develop that lot." I'm, "I don't have to develop that lot." He goes, "You have to develop that road." And we got in a confrontation over the phone. I didn't know who this guy was. He never introduced himself or anything. He just calls me up and says, "I'm the new building official, and you've got to develop that road." Caught me on a bad time, and from there on, we never see eye to eye. And I think that was one of the reasons he retaliated by putting this on me. But I'm not done here. Still have another question. Because furthermore, Mr. Erbil from McKenna says that parcel five does not front upon an improved public or existing private street in the used ordinance, section thirty-two dash four-five. Thirty-two four, dash four-five says, "Every dwelling or principal building shall be located on a lot which fronts upon an improved public or an existing private street. Every dwelling or principal building." And he's using that standard on a vacant lot to justify that the vacant lot is not buildable. How'd you do that?
Um, again, the, the, the site plan as it was submitted has an improved public road in front of parcel five. The site plan amendment as proposed does not. The recommendation, or in our opinion, the, um, it's not in the city's interest to have a lot that would require further investment of the, the road to build a, a principal building on. And a principal building would not be built on parcel five as it is, because it does not have that improved road in front of it.
So you're using a standard that's used for dwellings and buildings on a vacant lot, saying, oh, later, you know, sooner or later, someone's going to have to build something on that lot. It's a vacant lot. You don't use a standard that's on a building for a vacant lot. It says right here, "Every building, or every dwelling or principal building." Is there a dwelling or principal building on Lot Five?
No. And, and the, the point that we were making in the letter is that there cannot be--
There cannot be what?
There cannot be a dwelling or a principal building built on the lot until there's a--
Right.
Road improvement.
But is there a building or, on that, on that lot right now?
Well, there's not.
No. But you're using a standard here that says, "Every dwelling or principal building shall be located on a lot which fronts upon an improved public or existing street."
Yes. So, and, and the sentence underneath that says that, "Approval of the proposed amendment will result in an unbuildable lot, because parcel five does not front upon an improved public or existing private street, road, or highway. And therefore, a dwelling or principal building would not be approvable on the subject parcel."
Furthermore, planning standards, vehicular access and circulation, the location and design of driveways, that is what ordinance thirty-two dash one oh two is talking about. The location and design of driveways should provide continuity to the public road system. And you say it in here that the site plan is, as we already approved, approved, provided continuity to the public road system, the proposed amendment would reduce the continuity as it would leave parcel five without access to a public road. You're using an ordinance that addresses a driveway to state that this lot doesn't fulfill that, that requirement.
Right. We were using the, the standards that, um, the zoning ordinance states that the planning commission should consider when deciding whether or not to approve a site plan.
That's the ordinance that I believe they use when approving a driveway. Correct?
Uh, yeah. It's, it's the standards that are used as part of a site plan approval. And so the, the letter has those standards quoted in italic type, and a comment about our opinion as planners about how those standards apply to this proposal.
In relationships to surrounding property, you go on to state, as we noted, "A change in the configuration of the operation of the VFW lot has the potential to cause an impediment to emergency vehicle access." If there's any change in configuration to the VFW parking lot, wouldn't it need the approval of this planning commission, as well as many other departments in this city? Or couldn't they go out there and change their parking lot without any approval?
No, they would require a site plan approval.
Right.
So, I guess my question is, then you want to put the requirement to not change on another owner because you're not willing to improve to, to your site plan that was approved? Is that what you're saying?
No. What I was saying here was that this planning commission was given a recommendation of denial based on these--
I understand.
--these standards that don't apply to vacant lots. These standards apply to dwellings and buildings, driveways, not to vacant lots. They stigmatized my vacant lot. They condemned it. They condemned my vacant lot. It was an inverted condemnation, is what it was. I want to pass a few pages to the city council. May, may I approach?
Move board, please.
This is just a--
Are these all the same?
These are all the same.
Okay. Just pass them we can share.
These, as you can see, highlighted, I highlighted Sidwell owners. They've lots on that portion of Anita Drive that is not developed. There's five lots there. Two of them would are owned by the city. I guess they're unbuildable and nonconforming. They need to do something to those and combine them somewhere else. Is there identical to mine?
Um, I don't believe that they had site plans that had roads in front of them.
Can you say that again, Mr. Erbil?
I don't, I don't believe those lots, I'm not certain, had a site plan that someone was asking to be amended that had a road in front of it.
Mr. Mancini, can you tell us which are your four and five lots on these--
My lots are the, my lot, the one, Lot Five would be the one that is completely highlighted, the boundaries. And then all the other lots, I just have the Sidwells, um, highlighted, just to show you that, in relationship, where they are.
Is this the original plant?
It's the original plant.
So really, where they see Frazier Drive, this is the way it used to be platted. So it's confusing here.
Oh, no, no, no. Frazier, no, you could, you, I mean, it's lot split. You could, you, where you see, um, this is--
There's the dead end of Anita on here.
Yeah, it's confusing.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, Anita, it, it's, it's a little confusing, because--
Here's Frazier Drive.
Anita is kind of dead end where the, you see the Sweeney Drain? You see the Sweeney Drain coming through here like this? So this would be where the dead end is, where the, to show Anita driving, continuing here. But this is Lot Five, and these are the other lots that are on Anita Drive. This is Frazier Drive here. This is the lots that, that we platted off of Frazier Drive.
Oh, so right here is the drain.
No, no, this is the drain. This is the Sweeney Drain. See the Sweeney Drain right there?
Okay, but this is a dead end, right here.
This is--
The dead end's actually right now, right here.
Dead end's right where that white, white portion is.
Right here. Oh, yeah, right where you see this white.
You see that white? That's the dead end.
That's the dead end, right here. You see it?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I see it.
Okay.
And then if you can see the Sweeney Drain, that's where the, the non-paved portion of Anita Drive goes to.
Where's the Sweeney Drain?
Right here.
I see.
Now, now, a few times, Mr. Andrews had mentioned that those lots, or no, Mr. Erbil said, "Well, those lots didn't have a site plan." And I want to bring up another ordinance from the city regarding site plans.
Section thirty-two dash one oh three, submission requirements. Whenever a building permit is required for the erection or a structure alteration of a building, other than a single-family home, all right? These are single-family homes. I didn't, I didn't need a site plan for the single-family home. A required site plan shall include the entire site under the control or ownership of the applicant. Did I have control and ownership of Anita Drive? Section three-two dash one oh three, paragraph B. A required site plan shall include the entire site under the control or ownership of the applicant, with all areas proposed for improvement, and all unplanned areas also included. All site plans submitted for consideration shall be prepared in accordance with the following. Did I have ownership of Anita Drive at any time?
I don't imagine that you did, no.
No, I didn't. Let me also bring another code to you, since you brought up, because those were not under the site plan. Section three-two dash one oh four, review procedures. Section C, approval period. A site plan approval shall be valid for one year from the date of approval. If physical improvement of that site is not in actual progress at the end of the year and diligently pursued to completion, the approval shall be null and void unless renewed or extended by specific planning commission action. This site plan was approved when? Nineteen ninety-six. At set idle, no action for six years. Can you show me anywhere in those six years where we were extended by specific planning commission action? No. It's a null and void site plan that I've been held to.
Yes. When, when you got all of your, um, homes inspected, okay, that you sold, and people are living in, what were they inspected to?
When I had my homes inspected?
Yeah. Were they inspected to something other than the site plan that--
The home was not inspected as a site plan.
The home is inspected to where it fits on the lot, whether the utilities are on the lot, all of that--
Each home, each home, Mr. Farina, had its own individual, um, survey. It was built within the, all building codes. Every, every aspect of the building was inspected, and then it had an ASB-- And then it had an ASBilt, its own individual ASBilt, that was submitted for approval. Nothing to do with this site plan.
The whole, the whole construction of that area was done to this site plan, was it not?
No.
No, it was not.
It was not.
You never followed your site plan.
I did individual, I did each lot individually.
But were you following the site plan that was approved?
If I was following the site plan, I was doing it on my own recourse, because the site plan was null and void by your own code.
I guess, I guess somebody other than me is going to have to, have to
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to weigh in on that topic of that null and void. What that is designed to mean is that if somebody doesn't take advantage of a site plan approval and act upon it, then they can't, after that time period expires, use that approval. They have to go back to square one. It does, that is not, he's misconstruing what the impact of that null and void is, in my opinion, is that, is that the city, because of the fact that the city changes its codes periodically, they, they want somebody to be able to rely on a, on a code as long as they're diligently progressing. But if they get an approval under one set of rules and they don't do anything for more than the, that time period that's specified in the ordinance, then they have to go back to square one and the approval that they got for the site plan under the old code isn't any longer valid. They have to have it re-reviewed, pay new fees and all that. That's what the null and void provision is all about, in my opinion.
Okay. And once the project starts, it keeps going on.
It does, unless
It's, the whole thing was the start of the project within the allotted time. Because we would get, I know we, if, if, if nothing got started, we would tell the applicant they have to come back and get an extension.
Exactly.
And that's the, the regular procedure was, come back, they want to extend their site plan because they couldn't do anything through that time.
I believe there's a provision in the building code as well that requires people to make progress and if, and if somebody doesn't do, if somebody starts something and it sits for two years, that they, you know, and
Yes, well, the state code is six months, so, yeah.
Their, that approval is no longer valid.
So I think, I think that, because if I, what is our date that the actual site plan that you started working with? Not when it was originally. I thought you were like 2006 or, that you came back, you came back to the planning commission, and I don't know those dates, I can't, I can't tell you, so I
I think our first building permit was 2012 on Josephine. That was our first building permit, 2012. All right.
I guess we would need the minutes to see when the actual site plan was approved.
Let's put it this way, there's definitely some areas here that, I mean, worst-case scenario, somebody were to enforce this site plan, there's a lot of loopholes in here where I, I don't know how concrete that would be, all right? I don't want to go that route. I wanted to, I wanted to point it out to everybody. I do have the route that this planning commission had requested me to do. And if I wouldn't have gotten Omnicron between Christmas and New Year's, we would have been well on our way. Because after selling the property to the new owner of 1788 Anita, and having our last meeting, I think it was virtual, where it was recommended that I do what I can to combine the lots, I went through the process of doing that. And I believe Mr. Urbil can verify with me that I had spoken in depth with the city assessor to find out what her requirements were in making this combination happen, as well as all the documents that needed to be fulfilled, filled out. And I have them here. I have the application, I have the, the surveys, I have verification that the taxes are all paid up, copy of the warranty deeds. I believe we have to make a submission to, or request, application to DTE, instructions for the rescinding of the principal residence exemption, as well as a new form to record a new principal residence exemption. Here's the DTE form, certify survey, as well as calling Mr. George Jerome and getting a contract from George Jerome to get him ready to do the survey. I can pass them, I believe I emailed a copy to Mr. Urbil, I don't know if you passed it over to you or not. I can't make these docu, sign these documents, of course, because it's, it's got to be signed by the owner. So I had called Mr. Moreno, and I had established that date with him, in which I couldn't show up because then I had to isolate for 10 days. Unfortunately, it happened again to me. And then I couldn't get through to him. And I called and called and called, I sent emails, I texted him, I actually went to his house, knocked on his door. No one answered. And I wrote a note on the card and I put it in his door. He finally called me back a few days later apologizing, saying that he was swamped at work, he had a project that's just, he's too much involved with, and he can't, he doesn't have time to consider working on getting this lot combination going, though he's very much interested because he wants to put, by his own terms, a she shed, a nice big she shed with a basketball court and everything on that lot. And I had told him, you can't build anything on that lot until it's combined, can't build anything on a vacant lot. And he asked me for his, for my assistance in building the shed as well as everything else, and I told him I'd help him with, with the lot combination, and I have it here. So he said, you know, he wants to get it started in the summer to get with him in the spring. So I left him alone because I had already been pestering him for a month, and I don't want to do that to anybody. And I will contact him here as soon as the snow melts and try to get him start on this process. If we can do this, that'd be great. What you saw is my frustration. And I apologize for my outwornness, but I put sweat, blood, and tear in that project. And if you would have told me today, if I would have known 20 years ago, 30 years ago, what I know today, I would have never touched it. I certainly didn't make money on it. I would have made more money working at McDonald's. And I injured myself. I feel pain every day on that, because I couldn't afford to have people to do it, and I didn't have the machine to do it. I was actually doing it sometimes with wheelbarrows and shovels. Backfilling with wheelbarrows and shovels, can you believe that? But you got to do what you got to do, you know? And I didn't pinch on that project. And if you talk to those homeowners, they're happy as can be. Live and learn.
Okay, so are, do, I think that's, is that the end of your presentation?
That's the end of my presentation, sorry for taking so long.
Now, the board, it comes back to the board, do we have any questions for the petitioner?
We got one, yes.
Okay, you were, his was lit first, so Commissioner Farina.
So you're in the process of getting this combined with the Scott?
Yes, we're 95% there. I just needed signatures. Call, call George, get in on the survey, because speaking with the city assessor, she doesn't want, we have two legal descriptions, and Mr. Jerome said, why don't we just combine the two legal descriptions? She wants a whole new legal description, so George's got to go out there and redo it.
Okay. We appreciate your tolerance, you know, we know it's frustrating. I'm worried about setting precedent for another builder coming in saying, I ain't going to do part of my, you know, part of this plan that I, I said I was going to do and I went out of it and you let Mancini out of it and so, that. So my, my thing is, I think you're making progress. I'd like to give you more time to make that progress. Is that something you would be amenable to?
I'm, I'm working on it, I'm, I think I'm there, so, you know, as long as I can get Mr. Moreno to give me some signatures, I'll get it started.
Okay. So, all right. Let's wait before you make any, Commissioner.
Well, my question was, I think you just answered, is the survey already done or just the application?
Just the, I, I contacted George and I have everything. I can't hire George just yet until I get signatures from Mr. Moreno. That would kind of be putting the cart in front of the horse. As soon as I get Ms. Steve to give me the signatures, I file the app, and then in speaking with, Ms. Cop?
Cop.
Yes, speaking with Ms. Cop, she doesn't want the application until everything is done. Because I asked her, I said, can I hand over the applic, you know, the signatures and the applicants? She goes, uh-huh. I want the file complete before you bring it over.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's a reason for that, and that is under the Land Division Act that handles There's a timetable that runs under the state law for, for processing something, and the city has a right to reject a file unless it's complete. So what she is saying is that I want to look at it
Counselor, can you turn on the light, please?
Oh, sure. Look.
Here, I got it.
She wants the completed file with all of the, all of the documents prepared, the surveys, the fees paid, et cetera, in order to be able to process it all one time, because there's, there's a 45-day time period for review.
That's my understanding.
But it only runs from the time that the complete file is submitted.
So there's still be 45 days, and that might be something to bring up to that homeowner.
Yes, and I
Because if he wants to get it going this summer
Right, and I, I plan on giving him a call here in the next, in the following week. I, I just wanted to, I didn't want to become a nagging ache where then he probably will start resenting doing it. But when I call him, I'll let him know that it's a process, and even if he wants to get that started come June, we need to get started ASAP on it.
Commissioners Erniki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for Mr. Urbil. Did you receive the documents that Mr. Mancini is saying that he has, the tax, you know, paid?
I have not received them, no.
I'm sorry, did
I have not received them, no.
I thought I
You answered that, sir?
I, I'm pretty sure you did not receive a package of the email with, with, in your email I sent, I have it in my attachment, with all these documents that were
My, I just, I just looked, my emails have the minutes, so if you can send them to me, I'd be happy to
I'll send it again.
I, I'm sure Mr. Urbil would have included that in our packet. We don't have those documents in our packet, Mr. Mancini.
I apologize, you should have.
That would probably make us feel a little bit better that you are progressing. I want to make it clear to my colleagues and everybody in the audience, I know I have voted no on postponing your item. I'm not against the amendment itself. I'm all for the amendment, I'm all for your combining those two lots and getting this completed. What I don't like is the timeframe that we have given you, and we're not even close, still not even close to completion. If, if there is a motion on the floor to postpone again, I will again vote no, just so you understand where I'm coming from.
Well, I hope you understand also, Ms. Terniki, that I spent 18 months fulfilling your request to go out there and verify that there is access for the safety vehicles turnarounds. And when I present, when I was ready to present, it was a completely different subject now with Lot Five. There was a little resentment there. If you remember our, my first time that I presented this site amendment, there was, there was no discussion about Lot Five. It was all discussion about safety vehicles turnarounds.
Okay, and I understand
And I, and I spent 18 months verifying that information, and when I presented it, and there was a new obstacle that came up, it was Lot Five.
Okay, I appreciate
That, that, that took a lot of time. And then of, of course, we had also the delays because of the COVID situation.
We've all had delays in our life, Mr. Mancini.
Right.
And I understand that, too.
Okay.
We have been very diligently trying to work with you to get this completed. I don't like comments about retaliation from building officials and administration. It's just, I don't appreciate that. We all are here to work with applicants to get things done legally, and that's where I'm coming from. To me, the original site plan is a legal document, and I don't see you following through with that legal document. You come with the site plan amendment, all for it, but we have had a lot of time working on this. So again, if there is a motion on the floor to postpone, I will vote no.
Mr. Chairman?
Wonderful.
I wanted to let the commission know that I have received some communications from Deborah Cop, the assessor, indicating that he has made some progress with respect to this, but she indicated to him at one point that, that, that because the, the new descriptions of these lots will become the new tax assessment records and so forth, it was critically important that those descriptions be correct. And she said that the statute in our, our Land Division ordinance require a current survey, and she was not willing to accept a survey that was done years and years ago, even though there might not be any change yet. But, but the, so
I think he presented that, though.
She acknowledged that she had received some of the documents that she, but she told him that she needed a current survey and that, and, you know, with COVID and other things, that's, you know, that's been part of the delay, but
But it definitely a rewritten, complete.
I had to know that, that the city assessor, who is the one that processes the lot combination thing, feels that there's progress being
Thank you, thank you, Mr.
And perhaps, I apologize, Mr. Urbil, perhaps I'm confusing that package I sent perhaps to Ms. Cop and didn't send it to you. Maybe that, I know I put a package together and I
Just to clarify, I, I just found it, it was from December 30th, the incomplete application that Ms. Cop did not accept.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
So that was received, that was my error.
So I, I'm not lying.
Thank you.
And coming forward
Okay.
Coming forward, it sounds like Mr. Jerome will not give you that new legal description until you get, what, is
Well
It's holding that up to get to Mrs. Cop?
I, I debated with her some time because it's going to be a bigger expense, so I was trying to get around it, and it would have been a quicker turnaround time, too, if we could have used the legal descriptions that we already have. And then, you know, in depth, she explained to me why, and then I'm, and of course, she's,
That is the holdup, though.
She's the one who, who is going to, to uphold the standard that we need to work with, and so that's the position that we're going to take then.
That's what's holding us up now, time-wise, holding you from completing this task.
The only thing was, it was Mr. Moreno.
Is also, is he indicated, now that the other fellow owns that property, she can't process a lot combination involving that parcel without that person's signature, and, and that person indicated that he was swamped at this point and he'd take it up earlier in the year, but in the spring or whatever, but so, that's consistent.
Can you turn on the mic, please?
Yes, sorry. That, in fact, is consistent with what I've been advised as well, is that
But none of these delays will cancel out or take like a, a timeframe that it's got to be done in this time for them. I'm talking for them. For us, we'd like to see it done already.
Right.
We, you know, because
What?
Delays keep bringing up meetings in a, sometimes we have a meeting just because of that, and it costs the city money to have these meetings with attorney planners and the board members, so I really So I really, you know, I, I think if the board agrees, we need some finality to do this, and it's, I think the frustration is because we keep having those dates. I think we either need to put it off instead of a definite time period so that we don't have another meeting and then find out it's not done, I don't, what's our alternative? To not have a meeting just because it was hit the end of his timeframe? Because what if this, this homeowner gets sick and now it doesn't get done again? What, how can we-
What if the homeowner decides he doesn't sign the documents?
Well, one, one, one of the things that is, is important in this process is that, as I understand, that this homeowner wants to do something with this vacant lot, and he isn't going to be able to do anything on that vacant lot, build a play structure or, or do anything, build a shed or whatever, unless he combines those lots, and he understands that and, and says that he's willing to do, do that. But, but I, I do agree with you, Randy, that even if, even if they got his name on the dotted line tomorrow and George Jerome did a survey and, and it got submitted 45 days, you know, later, there's going to be some review process on the part of the city that will typically take nearly 45 days. So, I mean, it makes no sense if you feel that the progress is adequate to postpone it 30 days or, or whatever, because that's not going to be a sufficient amount of time to be able to, but it's important that it get done right because otherwise, after the city approves this, it gets sent over to the county land file department, and they will reject it if they find anything that is not exactly the way it ought to be, which is part of the reason that, that Deborah Cop is so insistent on having all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. She doesn't want to be in a position where, after she has processed it and said it's, it's ready to go, to have it get sent back and said the legal descriptions aren't correct or whatever.
Okay, is there anybody else?
Yes, I have had my-
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Barr.
I heard things tonight that I had never heard before. You're asserting that there's codes that you should not really legally be maintaining at this point, and that's new information to me. I am willing to sit down with you, get your codes, and I will do the legal research on it to see-
I have them.
Well, all right, I'm, I'm not going to go and look for them, but if you have them, I will go through it and find out. I am an attorney, so, you know, I can do this. And I will look to see whether you have a point that you should be, you're being called to standards that are no longer legal. And if you're wrong, I'll explain it. If you're right, I'll explain it to the council. So that's my suggestion, is to adjourn it one month, and I will research it.
I'll be happy more. I, I sent emails to everybody but the city, but this planning commission, and I didn't want to involve the planning commission with a lot of, a lot of that, and I don't know if that was right or wrong, I wasn't quite sure. But I, I did, there are emails to Mr. Urbil, Mr. Clark, as well as the city manager and a few other people, a chain link. I'll be happy to forward all those to you.
Well, I'm just narrowing it down. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. I will narrow it down to where you're saying, this is an old-fashioned code that should no longer be in right now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll forward those emails. There's, there's only like four or five emails.
That's what I thought.
And they, and they, and they're, they're questions that, the same questions that I addressed today with copies of the ordinance.
All I want, or the ordinances, the codes that you're complaining about. I will research it, and we'll get an answer one way or another.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Andrews.
I have absolutely no issue with, with her reviewing the emails and so forth that were supplied to some of us before and making her judgment about that, but I think she should not be in a position where she's essentially taking a position with, with respect to whether or not she thinks he's, he's correct and the city is wrong or whatever, because I think that, I think at that point, she's moving in the direction that, that she's almost representing him on this thing when in fact she's going to be a decision-maker on this case. So I think it's, it's one thing for her to, her to review it from, as a planning commissioner because he's provided information that she wants to evaluate. I, that is fine, but I, I don't think that she ought to be weighing in on the legality side of it, whether he was right or the city is right or whatever, because I think she, then she's probably going to have to disqualify herself as voting, and I don't think that's what she, where she wants to be.
Okay, thanks.
I have no intention of getting involved like that. I am simply wanting to look at the codes and find out.
I have no issue with that.
And I don't intend to be on, I'm certainly not working for him. I'm not working for the council. I am strictly trying to find out legally, and if he does, I will go to the correct people in the city, not to him, and not even to the council. I will go to the correct people and discuss it, and with you, particularly with you.
That wasn't terribly clear what I was hoping for, and I just wanted to make-
I understand.
Okay. Uh, okay, any other commissioners, any questions? All right, I think we've beat this up a lot. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend it one month.
Well, that, we found out we can't do a timeframe.
Yeah.
We can't just extend it, then?
Why can't Mr. Mancini just come to us or request a meeting when he gets out of his ducks in a row?
Okay.
That makes the most sense.
And I can keep everybody informed, in the process that where we stand, like when so I get the signatures, once George gets the surveys and so forth. And if it's okay with Mr. Clark, I can put everybody on the email. This is something-
Give it to Paul.
Yeah.
Paul will, Paul will-
Instead of you, yeah.
Okay.
And he's, he's the planner, so make him happy, we're generally happy.
All right. I mean, to CC anybody doesn't cost me much and doesn't take me much energy.
The administration only, Mr. Mancini.
And that's how I kept it. Ms. Churnecky, that's how I kept all these questions that were going on.
I understand that's how you, yeah, I'm just saying, don't email us individually.
Oh, and, and I'm glad I did because Mr. Clark told me that, you know, if, if I had any questions, to bring it up at this meeting, not to discuss it through emails or so forth, and that's-
Mr. Yanek, is it a good idea to postpone indefinitely because what happens if he never, if Mr. Mancini doesn't ever come back?
Well, if, you could postpone it indefinitely with the, or for a long enough period of time that you think that it's apt to be completed by, I, I think if you postpone it indefinitely, you could always-
Put an end date to it, like-
Months, months down the road, bring it back before the commission if, because you didn't feel there was any progress being made. But, but, you know, realistically, I think that it's going to be, you know, several months before it gets completely resolved because I think that, I think it's going to take time to get the survey, I think it's going to get time to get the homeowner to sign off on it, and once, once it gets submitted to Deborah Cop, she is going to look at it, and if it's not completely, if not every i and every t is dotted, she's going to send it back and say, these are the things that need correction. And that's not uncommon. It doesn't mean that somebody isn't trying hard to get it, but it, the process is not a, it's relatively complicated with lots of things that you can make a mistake. Almost none of them get processed the first time that somebody submits them.
So we got to give some time. So, Commissioner Farina, I know you had some.
Mancini?
Yes, sir.
What's, what's a timeframe you would be comfortable with?
Why don't we, the homeowner indicated that he wants a shed up this summer.
July, August.
So why don't we postpone it until September, which should give me enough time to have this all completed and hopefully have that shed up already? If we, if I have it way ahead of time, we could move it up. I can keep everybody abreast.
Do we need to actually even have him at another meeting, or we can, we do this through Mr. Urbil, just presenting it at a meeting that everything's done?
I think what you, one of your prior postponements included that, that if it was done, I would let you know, and it wouldn't need to be a part of another agenda, Mr. Mancini would not ever have to come back.
Yep, I remember that. Yeah, and that, I think it would make things a lot easier, and we don't even have to have a special meeting, we could post, wait till the next meeting if it gets done, like, say, in July. And we don't have an August meeting, we could do it September still. Okay, I, I'm open to a motion, if anybody-
I move to postpone the, any action on this for, for a period ending six months from our current meeting.
Six months from when?
Our current meeting.
Well, the sec, six, in September, I think it's the seventh or sixth, so-
Right.
So six months, or six, yeah, so it would be, we could actually give it the exact date because we get September 19th.
September 7th.
7th, yeah.
7th.
Yeah.
Why did I say 19th?
No, they're all early, first week.
Advantage of putting a date in, and it is, everybody knows what it is and you don't have to re-notify anybody, because-
It was last year's.
So what, let's do-
Last year's?
Do you want to?
No, it's September 7th.
September 7th.
September 7th.
For this year's.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw 19th somewhere.
Well, the alternate, it would be September-
Oh, I saw, never mind.
It's the alternate.
Yes, here it is, September 2nd.
Yep. I was looking at alternate dates.
Okay.
Okay, you want to word that again?
I move to postpone action on the site plan until the September 7th meeting of 2022 at 7:01 PM.
I'll support. Motion and by Chairman, or Commissioner Farina with support by Commissioner Kyle. Let's do a roll call on this.
Barr?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Arneke? No. Moreno?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Morgen?
Yes.
You know, I postponed till the 7th of September, but if you get that signature-
Oh, yes.
Kind enough to email it so we know that it- Well, I'm going to keep Mr. Urbil informed of where we stand in the whole process.
We'll be new best buddies.
And that, you, we could approve everything without you coming back again if we do this all. If you stay in touch and communicate, I think it's, it's better for all of us. It stops us having a meeting just for you again, which I think we've, we've had a lot of meetings just with, for you, so.
Special.
You're special.
You guys, you guys love me so much, you just won't let me go.
Thanks. So you understand everything, though?
I understand. Just keep us posted. I will.
Be nice to-
Rounding third base.
There you go.
Reason to stop now.
All right, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, no other unfinished business. We go to public communications on non-agenda items. Anything from the public? Seeing none. We go on to zoning board of appeal member liaison report.
I have something to report.
All right.
Our last meeting was September of last year. Our next meeting is tomorrow night.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I can tell you that we'll, we'll be looking at variance for signs for a business opening up on Kelly Road, and it has to do with a monument sign being put closer than, because all of the buildings are, on Kelly are closer than the, than the allowable offset for the signs, and he's also asking for a second sign to be put on the building with more square footage than is in the-
You said it's on Kelly or on-
On Kelly.
So that would probably be between Grossbeck and railroad tracks?
It's below, help-
Oh, it's below, between Kelly and 14 Mile?
Between Kelly and Grossbeck.
Between Kelly?
I mean-
No, on Kelly, between Grossbeck?
And 15.
And 15, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right there, because all those are close. Okay, anything else?
Nope. That's, that's the only thing on our item. We will be filing a report like you guys, like we did tonight, and-
Do we get a chance to get copies of that?
Sure.
Do we, how, how does that work? Can you email everybody, or? I'm sure they would like to know what the planning commission, too, the members, our report.
I can share it, yeah. The zoning board is not obligated to provide that similar report, but I can, I can make it and share it with both parties.
If you're not doing, I mean, I don't want to-
We did it last year.
It was a combined report last year, yes.
There wasn't that much, anyway, probably.
Right, well, right.
But it's nice to know what's going on. That's why the liaison, but-
You know, the schedule follows the planning commission's schedule by one day, you know?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So that's going to be pretty, it'll always be the next day.
Correct.
Makes it easy for you, Frank. You stay up, stay up through the night and get your two days right away.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners' comments and items of interest or concerns. Let's start with Commissioner Barr.
I have nothing.
Okay, Commissioners, Arneke?
Congrats to all the new officers, and if I can ask Mr. Urbil, any new apps coming down the line?
So, I am not in the process of reviewing any applications now. I did send one back for being incomplete, and I don't know what course of action that applicant is taking. From several conversations I've had, it's my understanding that there are several site plans being prepared, but they have not been applied for.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Farina?
Just want to let you all know that St. Malachi Church has started their fish fries, and they'll be going on every Friday through Lent from here on out. We start tonight on, today is Ash Wednesday, and best fish round, so get a chance, stop by.
In-person fish fries or?
In-person.
And your money, your money will go through this person here.
Okay.
If I ever get back to college.
Is that it?
That's it.
Commissioner Cowan?
I got one question. In here is talking about the master plan being completed now. It's all, everything's done with it. I'd like to know if, get a copy of it?
Absolutely, yeah, a physical copy.
Are they actually printed?
We have not yet printed physical copies, other than one record copy at City Hall, but I can do that for sure.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And maybe an, just an email of it, too.
Yeah, just, you can email it to me, that's fine.
I could do that, too. Just so you know, the-
I'd like hard copies because it's nice to show.
I will make hard copies, and it will have the adoption resolutions from both council and planning commission. Just so you know, though, the difference is really those resolutions from the last print copy you got.
Oh, okay.
But to make it official, I will-
Is there, do you know the cost of it? So if we promote it to people that approach us about a business, we can say, you can get the master plan at City Hall for?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
It'll probably be in a city office.
I mean, I, typically, I would respond to that request by pointing them to the link on the website.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay. Was that it?
Yeah, I just, I just like to get a copy of it.
When we talk about the master plan, I think we all have to keep in mind, that is the roadmap we should be measuring all of these things against, is what the, that's what I was trying to say earlier when I asked the people about thinking strategically down the line. We put a lot of time, a lot of thought, and a lot of effort into where we want the city to go, and that's-
to go, and that's, all of our decisions should be based on that plan. You know, it doesn't have to exactly match that plan, we can go left or right, but-
There's a reason for it.
There's a reason for it.
Thanks. Commissioner Perry.
Nothing at this time.
And Commissioner Warnock?
Chair Warnock.
Chair Warnock, yeah, that's right, I said enough. Well, I'd like to verify at least, because Commissioner Zarnicki brought it up there. Should I have maybe abstained voting on that, or the fact that it was after?
Let's, let's see, let's see how it, you know, if, 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 if the decision on it is, hinges on something that you did during the time that you were there, I think you should abstain.
Right, yes.
If, 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 when the whole thing comes down, it, the, whatever you did didn't have anything to do with the relevance of, of whether or not this site plan is going to be amended, then I think you can vote on it.
Just state it, just state it, if you're clear, you're clear, just state it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Everybody knows.
Okay. Other than that, that's all I have. Strangers?
I would, I would like to introduce all of you to the newest member of our firm, Haley Tomac, who is there. She is actually handling the zoning board of appeals meeting tomorrow night because Alyssa is recuperating from the COVID.
Ooh.
So she's better, but, but she, her energy level is still not what she, today was her first day back to work, but, so Haley is going to cover the meeting tomorrow night, and she will be helping me and, and helping Don, and we will be teaching her some of the stuff, you know?
So we'll see you at future meetings here, too?
Great. So she's smart, and I think you'll like working with her.
Welcome, Haley.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
Good to meet you. And Paul, anything?
No, I have nothing further, thanks.
You what?
I have nothing further.
Nothing? Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Yes, support.
All right, that was quick, so-
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think I hear any nays.
It was nice seeing everybody again.
It was good, I was glad, yeah, that we could get together this way.